The meeting will come to order. The time is our five thirty P M on Monday, April twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four. This is a regular monthly meeting of the District of Columbia Commission on the Arts and Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairperson of the Commission. I'm wearing a blue, a gray and blue pinstripe suit and a gray shirt. I'll now call the roll. When you hear your name, please answer present. Corvassus Berry. Amy. Julianne. Demetrius. Jack. Cicely. Janice. Chase. Kimber. Carla.
Present.
Hector.
Present.
Gretchen. A quorum is present. This is a meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at Office Gov, Open Gov Office at D C dot gov. Notice of the meeting was posted in the D C Register, on the Commission's website, D C arts dot D C dot gov, and on the D C Office of Open Government's Central Meetings Calendar at open dash D C dot gov. The meeting is being conducted in a hybrid format. A number of us are at the Commission's Office Building in Washington, D C, at two hundred I Street Southeast, and a few are joining remotely using Zoom platform. The meeting is live streaming on the Commission's YouTube channel. An electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. I'll now read the land acknowledgement. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some were brought here against their will, some were drawn to leave their distant homes in hope of a better life, and some have lived on this land for more generations than can be counted. Truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all barriers of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what has been buried by honoring the truth. We stand on the ancestral lands of the Nukachtank and the Viscataway people. We pay respects to their elders, past and present. Please take a moment to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together here today, and please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this Arts Commission. Is there any objection to the agenda that was previously circulated? Here, no objection. The agenda stands as adopted. Good evening and welcome to everyone. First, I'd like to welcome our newly appointed Commission members, Amy Burnett, Demetrius Butler, who is not here, but we welcome him, and Janice Kim. Also, Corvassus Berry, Kimber McQee, Gretchen Warden, and I were recommended for reappointment to the Commission by the mayor and appeared before Chairman Mendelson on Friday. The full council is expected to vote on our reappointments May twenty first, so fingers crossed. For our grantee artist spotlight, and I should pause here for our new commissioners to remind us of why we're here. Each of our meetings starts with some grantee, some artist presenting, because we hear about the art, and then we get into all the other stuff. So our grantee artist spotlight, Helen Zugabe, will be presenting for Arab American Heritage Month. Ms. Zugabe, are you here?
I am here. Hello, everybody.
Great, welcome.
You want me to just get started? Okay, I know I have three minutes. Um, can I share my, my quick screen? Uh, disabled. Okay. Am I allowed to show some images? Let's.
They're working on it, yes.
You're working on it, okay. I think you just have to stick me as a co-host. There, okay. Okay. And I'm gonna put it on in side view. There. Can, can, can everyone see that? Can everyone, can everyone see my image there?
See it?
Are you, are, you could see every, everyone can see? Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna hurry, hurry. Um, so I am an Arab American artist, as you know, and I just loved hearing about what you just said about, um, the land acknowledgement and people of migration and, um, wanting to look for a better life. I, I feel that that is, uh, what I would like to get across in my work. And I have been, uh, in D C for about thirty years now, and after nine eleven, uh, my trajectory as an artist changed, a little bit more focused on, um, the narrative of Arab Americans and Muslims in America and how they were portrayed in the media and the news. And I, um, created this painting, Prayer Rope for America, um, that is now in the Library of Congress, and this was sort of the beginning of a certain focus of work that I had on changing the narrative and telling our stories as, as an Ameri, as an Arab American, as opposed to, now, this is not letting me move forward. Um, uh, there we go. And as I said, that was after nine eleven. Um, I began a series of work I call Stories My Father Told Me, again with sort of trying to change the narrative, and these are a series of twenty-five paintings and stories from my father, who was born in Syria. I, I was born in Lebanon, and about family, tradition, community, responsibility to your village, and so on and so forth. My father is the patriarch of our family, and he is what is called Hakawati, which means storyteller. And it's an oral tradition. I had a very difficult time asking him to write them down, but he ultimately did. There are twenty-five of those. Again, here with our, um, war in Iraq, Afghanistan, the issue of the Abaya. I tried to change that narrative, create a new dialogue. This series is called Changing Perceptions. Um, as an Arab American, I often use this idea of east and west and try to reform what that means. Um, so you can see my influences here. Um, I'm jumping because I looked at those questions and I'm trying to move through them. As an artist living in D C, um, I was privileged, um, to work with State Department as a cultural envoy. Um, Ms. E J Montgomery, our wonderful Ms. E J Montgomery, recommended me to go to Palestine, actually, for a month and work with, um, Palestinian women artists from the West Bank, which I did. Um, and then I subsequently went to Saudi Arabia and Switzerland. This piece, amazingly, um, it was selected by, um, the White House and President Obama to be given to Prime Minister Maliki when he was visiting the White House, and this was the official gift of the American people to the Iraqi people. Uh, this is a piece I did after I came back from Palestine called Midnight Prayers. And I would be where I was, I would hear the call to prayer, and this is, uh, a hope for peace in the Middle East, um, which seems timely. Uh, this piece, um, is from, a gift from Hillary, Secretary of State Hillary Clinton, um, to the King of Morocco. As well as these really amazing honors for me, I also, um, have been included in many, many art and embassy programs abroad, um, which, uh, have just been amazing as for further visual diplomacy. Regarding my engagement, um, with the D C Art Bank, which I am so grateful, I can't even tell you how much I appreciate your support of me as, and my work as an Arab American. It's validating, it's empowering. I feel like you're listening and you are amplifying my voice, my identity, and saying it's important. Um, I was evacuated from the war in Lebanon, and I didn't return home, um, home for thirty-five years. When I finally did, um, I was there for a month in Syria, Lebanon, and Jordan, and when I came back to America, the quote-unquote Arab Spring began, thus beginning a huge journey into this whole idea of displacement, forced displacement, migration, movement of people, not voluntary, um, which encompasses even our own border. This is the first piece I did, ex- uh, expressing the initial hope and optimism, um, in the Middle East that we had, and of course, it, it didn't turn out that way. Um, I know that you all know about Jacob Lawrence, who's my hero, and, uh, I first, uh, met his work in America. I didn't, I didn't get to study him abroad, but, um, anyways, I got to actually meet him as well at the Phillips Collection for his retrospective, but I began seeing parallels, um, in his, uh, migration series. Um, and I compared what was going on and being inspired by his work, uh, from my own migration series. I now have about fifty-two of these pieces, um, that are many, many inspired by, um, Jacob Lawrence. And so I, I, I'm thankful to the Commission for continuing to support my work, um, even including installations that have jumped off the two-D, uh, painting what I'm known for into installations with wood, shoes, and clothes that further engage my concepts. I hope that was under three minutes. I really, really tried hard. That's the end.
Thank you. If it wasn't, it's fine.
I'm so thankful to all of you. Thank you.
I'm proud to say I think I have some of your work, the, uh, Washington Monument. Yes, yes.
Yay. Thank you.
No, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
This is why we're here, so it's a delight to see your work and hear you talk about it and help us understand more of what's behind the, the artistry that you present to us. So thank you, thank you very much. Moving on to our public comment portion, we have a few individuals signed up for public comment this evening. The Commission welcomes your comments. They are very important to us. Please note the comments are limited to three minutes. Please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging in dialogue at this time. The purpose of this agenda item is for you, the public, to inform us, the Commission, about your views. If members of the public have factual questions, staff will be glad to follow up via email. When I call your name, you may begin your comments. Jackie Carter with the Children's Legacy Theater. Kia Nasella. Florencio Campello, editor, D C Art News, curator, artist, art critic, and author of One Hundred Artists of Washington, D C. Oh, well, we do have written comments from Mr. Campello, though, right? We'll read them. No, we'll, we'll read them.
Yes, oh, we'll read them.
We'll read them. Exactly, exactly. Um, the Commission appeared in front of the council of the District of Columbia's Committee of the Whole for its annual budget oversight hearing on Friday. We in the council heard from several representatives from the district's art community who urged the council to keep the C H budget at its current level, funding level, or provide an increase. Councilmember Zachary Parker of Ward Five joined Chairman Mendelson and Questioning Director Myers, C H Resource Allocation Manager Brandon Saunders, DeRaja Belli of the O C F O's office, and me about the C H budget. We all collaborative responded to the council members' various questions with some warranting a response at a later date due to the need for additional research. We hope the Commission continued to advocate for growth in our budget to continue meeting the increasing needs of our constituents. On display at the hearing was the positive support for finding ways to fund our Art Week D C initiative. That will be an economic driver for the district in the future. Director Myers will have more detail about the hearing, uh, the budget hearing in his report. Uh, so I'll now turn to executive director with the hiccups, or it's sneezing or something.
Good afternoon. My name is Aaron Myers. I'm the executive director for the D C Commission on the Arts and Humanities. I am wearing a, uh, blue suit and a, I'm African American in a, uh, blue and darker blue, uh, checker church.
We should probably explain to our new commissioners why we do that.
Yes, uh, we, we do that for those who, um, are visually impaired, and so we make sure that we, uh, give them the same respect that we would like if they were able to, uh, be able to see us. And so my report, uh, will be as follows. Staff updates. C A H would like to welcome our newly hired grant contractor Evelyn Archie, who began employment at our office on April twenty-second. We have a new grants manager who starts one week from today, and an assistant registrar scheduled to come on board, uh, later next month. We're going to move now to the music census. Um, the D C Music Census went live on April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four, and currently, we have nearly fifteen hundred music industry professionals have completed the survey. That deserves a round of applause, I think. Uh, this census captures key information about the D C area music economy to help the district and the community make informed, data-driven decisions to support the music ecosystems. If you are a musician, or if you are working in the industry in any way, we want to hear from you. Please go to W W W dot D C music census dot org. Again, that's W W W dot D C music census dot org, and fill out the census today. It only takes about ten minutes to complete and may be done on your cellphone. The D C Area Music Census is a part of a national cohort of cities organized by Sound Music Cities that includes Baltimore, Cleveland, New Orleans, and Minneapolis. Once the D C Music Census is complete, we will then prepare to launch our theater census. Onto the budget oversight hearing. The C A H budget oversight hearing was held last Friday. Bo Chairman Van Lee and I expressed to the council the necessity of finding the funds to replenish the more than eight million, uh, the mayor eliminated from the C A H budget. In the budget presented by the administration, the agency will see decreases from five percent to four point six percent for F Y twenty-six, and then down to four point two percent for F Y twenty-seven. This is in dedicated tax. This eliminates this year's fund balance and special purpose revenue for F Y twenty-three, leaving our total presented budget at a little more than forty-three million dollars. This includes the grant funding from the N E A. This is a decrease of nearly seven point eight million dollars from F Y twenty-four. Again, doing away with our fund balance. As an agency funded by dedicated tax, our fund balance is crucial in aiding our ability to provide grants in a manner that is more consistent in size for our grantees, and this is something you may have heard from some of those who testified. In years past, we have also used our fund balance to give extra assistance to our grantees in the form of enhancements. With the newly proposed budget, there is a little more than forty point seven, uh, million dedicated to grants, which is a decrease of eighteen point eight percent. For an example, this year, our fellowship grants were given at a flat rate of fifty-five hundred dollars. With this decrease, the fellowship grant stands at eight hundred thousand dollars, meaning, well, eight hundred thousand dollar reduction, meaning a hundred and forty-five grantees will not be receiving funding if we follow the current model. Also, the proposed budget scales back the Main Streets program. During the hearing, we heard the chairman indicate funding decreases for some of our grantees in our larger cohorts. These decreases represent the funding model the agency adopted after the dissolution of Nukachk. Now, in F Y twenty and F Y twenty-one, G O S funding for these participating organizations increased threefold or more in some cases. Since the dissolution of Nukachk, C A H has renewed its commitment to fair and equitable funding throughout the entire ecosystem, resulting in many of the members still receiving increased support, and in some case, double of what they received before F Y twenty. I want to be clear, this agency is dedicated to seeing organizations survive and thrive regardless of size, age, audience, or discipline, and my office is open to any organization who would like to come and have solution-based conversations around how we, as an agency, may go even deeper in our efforts to ensure this ecosystem is supported with a fair and equitable funding model. Coming to the Commission over one year ago this month, it was evident that this agency, while given increases in its budget and, and the additional work required to accomplish its charge, was severely understaffed. I have tirelessly worked both internally and with our sister agencies, and our chairman can attest to some of the phone calls of us trying to find solutions to ensure we had the ability to increase staff to meet the communication needs, the public engagement needs, the diversity, equity, and inclusion needs, as well as the grant management needs. Last year, we presented a budget addressing these concerns based on our required tasks. I still hope we are able to accomplish these goals. Because of the announced cuts, there's a possibility of fewer grants being awarded and at decreased amounts. Knowing this will have a negative impact on staff and grantees, we at C A H will do our level best to minimize these challenges and strive to keep the funding for our grantees stable. As far as grants, we continue to work diligently to complete the grant award process. Uh, the Grant Department has processed more than one thousand grant purchase orders for the current F Y twenty-four fiscal year. Thank you to our dedicated grant manager and contractors for making this possible. I encourage all of those who have applied for grants to starting, uh, ensuring all your information is up to date and properly downloaded in all of the required systems, and I would say that, start doing that now. This will allow the process to move in a timely manner. Last, the Cannabis Festival and the Whammies. The weekend of April nineteenth, C A H had a presence at the National Cannabis Festival at R F K Stadium. C A H was an exhibitor on both the nineteenth and the twentieth, where we were able to address thousands of attendees and inform the performing musicians, producers, and managers about our grant opportunities and about the D C Music Census. Concurrently, we were also supporting the Whammies, sponsored by one of our grantees, the musicianship. I want to congratulate all of the winners of two thousand and twenty-four. Whammy's held earlier this month, and I want to extend a special congratulations to former C A H Commissioner, Dr. Natalie Hopkinson, who received the Advocacy Award. Um, and, uh, that's special to me because I've received that award twice over the last few years, and so I know the level of work and dedication she's given to this community, and I think it's, uh, it was rightfully awarded. Uh, if you have any questions, I stand, uh, ready to answer to the best of my ability.
Any questions, commissioners, especially the new ones? There's a lot in there. There's a whole lot in there, uh, but we will play catch-up with you later. If not, uh, I'll move on. Is Kimber online? For the finance report? Do you have someone to cover that?
Brandon is on.
Good, I'll go on to grants, and we'll come back to finance.
Hello, everyone. I'm Gretchen Wharton, black female, black glasses, white blouse, platinum hair today. Okay. Um, grant, we call it G O. Is this better? Okay. Our general operating support, G O S, East Arts and Projects, Events or Festivals, P E F, for F Y twenty-five, all closed on April eleventh. Our grants team is currently vetting all the applications to prepare for paddling. Thank you so much for everyone getting your, um, your grant information in. Please make sure that all of the requested and required information is submitted and downloaded or uploaded, as it would be, to make sure that your applications are held, held up. There's still time to become a grant review panelist, and I say this every time because we always need more panelists. Our grants managers probably handle three times the amount of grants than most grants managers in other cities handle. So we really need a lot of panelists to help support that effort. Help shape the future of Arts and Humanities in D C by serving as one of those panelists, and you can do that by, um, I think there's, there is a link actually on our website, and you can contact that grants manager for the specific grant. The panelists provide critical reviews, comments, scores on grant applications, and your evaluations will directly impact funding recommendations. Panelists are diverse in age, race, gender, background, and artistic discipline. The qualifications are to be resident of the D C Metropolitan and surrounding areas, have experience in the arts or humanities, arts, artists, administrators, educators, gallery professionals, curators, and critics. The commitment is to review twenty-five to thirty applications over a period of about a month, participate in pre-panel review online, twenty to thirty hours estimated, attend an online video conference panel meeting, and receive a payment of two hundred and fifty-dollar gift card at the end of the panel session. You wouldn't believe how many years we fought to get payment for panelists. We finally did it, and so we're hoping we get more. Everything depends on our budget, but two hundred and fifty dollars for us was really quite an achievement when the panelists didn't get that, didn't get anything before. So thank you for all of, um, you do as a panelist. It's a lot of work, I know, but we have had so many panelists who then became grantees or vice versa and told us how much they've learned from, from that experience. Learn to learn more and apply to be a panelist at D C arts dot D C dot gov. Um, any additional questions, contact Travis Marcus at Travis dot Marcus at D C dot gov. In terms of F Y twenty-four grant update, we're happy to report significant progress in our F Y twenty-four grant agreements. Eleven hundred eighteen out of eleven hundred and ninety-eight, that's ninety-three percent, have been fully executed. Hands out to, to Terrell and the rest of the grants team, they've done an amazing job. We've established eleven hundred and seventeen purchase orders, representing over ninety-three percent of our grantees. New F Y twenty-five summer grant openings, Arts and Humanities Educational Projects, A H E P, Arts and Humanities Fellowship Program, Field Trip Experience, Capital Projects. Grant programs will be opening on Wednesday, June the fifth. All of this is online, please don't miss the deadline, so go onto the website and look at the deadlines, look at the applications, and make sure you get your applications in because they close on July ninth, so that's June fifth through July ninth. So I'm asking everyone who's listening to this, and those who aren't, tell your friends to go into the website, get the due dates, and make sure you put your applications in on time. Thank you.
Any questions? I, uh, join you in applauding the grants team for a phenomenal amount of work with not enough staff and not enough time, but, so thank them. We thank, thank you, wherever you are. Um, Brandon, are you here to, to do the finance report in Kimber's absence? You're on mute.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
You can, thanks.
Thank you, sorry about that. Um, hi, my name is Brandon Saunders, I'm the Resource Allocation Officer for C A H, and, um, I'm wearing a, uh, red and navy-blue striped polo, uh, and I'm joining every, joining virtually this evening. Um, so just to give an overview of what we discussed last Wednesday, our financial committee report meeting, um, enclosed are the three, three consistent resources that we've been providing, um, uh, pretty much for every commi, uh, commissioner's meeting, um, which is just, oh, give an overview and a split between the, our main two essentially splits in the budget, our administrative budget, uh, that accounts for roughly about twenty percent, and our, of course, grants budget that accounts for the remaining eighty percent of our budget. Um, and then the remaining tables, uh, just give a little bit more of a, I don't, line item breakdown, uh, specifically in terms of where we're at and the available balance. Um, this report definitely shows the output to, um, um, Mr. Wharton's earlier This report definitely shows the output to Mr. Wharton's earlier report in terms of the amount of requisitions created, and that is showcased in these tables. One thing that we definitely did discuss, especially with Julianne, was in regards to just the resources that we're going to be able to share, back and forth to get a little bit more of a clear context of the agency. That just includes more of a breakdown in terms of specifically each of the different cohorts, as you can see there on the bottom right screen of the current table. There, those are six cohorts, but of course the programs that then break out in terms of each of one of those cohorts overall, and just getting more detailed resources around the budget formulation and budget execution process. That includes not only, of course, how things were formulated for FY24, things that we had to speak to, of course, on Friday in front of council, but then also how to change it moving forward, in terms of getting more specific allocations for FY25 and how to execute the remaining part of FY24. So we're going to essentially also add just a resource in terms of, and share a little bit just in terms of, you know, almost like an annual calendar in terms of all of our given requirements, deliverables, and dates to just provide a little bit more transparency in terms of the, how the budget comes together in layman's terms. And then, of course, this is just, you know, just the beginning in terms of just learning our own cadence of what, how the council can just, you know, just become more involved and just have more context for themselves in order to make strategic decisions and so forth, and just build our rapport and connection, especially on our finance committee in terms of what can be provided just past these three tables and numbers. Thank you.
Brandon, for our new commissioners, I'm sure your eyes are rolling in your head over these numbers. We are planning an orientation session for you sometimes in the June timeframe. We're going to send a doodle poll out to get dates to review. And for some of us longstanding commissioners, we are invited to for a refresher in all of these details and things. So the good news is the numbers haven't changed in a while, so it's no news, no new news, but we will take you through these, I love the details, so you can really understand what they are. Brandon, thank you. Any other questions? Hector, I'm sure you have a question, I'm kidding. Thank you.
And I know it can be detailed, but I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate it. Carla, Public Arts Committee?
Thank you. Good evening, I'm Carla Sims, I'm an African-American female, medium-length brown hair, and wearing a pink sweater. I'm the Chair of the Public Arts Committee, and I'm happy to share that our team has been doing and continues to do some pretty amazing work, from the upcoming competitive grants to some gallery exhibits that we'll talk about a little bit later. I want to introduce our Public Affairs Team member Jenna Kriegel. Krispy Kriegel, I'm sorry. She joined us in September, and this will be her first time presenting to the monthly meeting, and we wanted to make sure that we gave her an opportunity to do that. She's a sculpture artist by training, and her educational and professional experience intersects with art history and community service, so she's passionate about getting artists paid, and she likes to see and make big things to put in public spaces. So Jenna, if you want to take it over?
Thank you, Ms. Carla, good effort. Just to clarify, my name is Jenna Kriegel. I know it's German, it's hard to say. For those of you who can't see, I am a white woman with blonde hair, thick black glasses, and a yellow cardigan, and I'm just so excited to share everything my public art team has been up to. We currently have three grant programs open, looking for applications. Number one is going to be our Art Exhibition Grant, managed by Dr. Michelle May Curry. It's going to open May 28th, running through July 1st, and this is to develop DC curators, our local curators. We're looking for specifically themes on social justice, veterans' affairs, and LGBTQ+ identity in celebration of World Pride 2025, which is going to be here in the district. Our second grant program is Public Art Building Communities Grant. That one is run by our Public Art Coordinator, Ms. Carrie Kennedy. It is currently open, and your applications are due by July 22nd, and it is, it supports the design fabrication and installation of permanent and temporary public artwork to connect neighborhoods and communities with local artists. The third grant program we have open is our infamous Art Bank Program, run by our curator, Dr. Michelle May Curry, in tandem with our Art Collections Registrar, Mr. Ron Humbertson, because it's that big of a grant, it requires both of them. And this is our ongoing and annual acquisition of art from metropolitan artists to become part of our Art Bank Collection. Artists within the district or within 50 miles of the district border get to submit their artwork, and if accepted, we will buy it, it will become part of the CAH collection and be exhibited in public areas and government buildings around the district. We also have two exhibitions worthy of discussing. Number one, you've been hearing about for a while, Thriving Families, it is open, and it's closing on May 24th. Now, I may be a little biased because I have the privilege to co-curate with Dr. Michelle May Curry, but if you haven't seen it, go see it. It honors Child Abuse Prevention Month, and it's a joint effort with Children and Family Services Association, and it's a beautiful testament to what can happen when we empower children and youth to celebrate thriving. Additionally, we are launching a new exhibition, A Toast to the Boogie: Art in the Name of Funkadelic. That's a mouthful, it's going to be June 17th through August 16th, and it honors the musician George Clinton with memorabilia and archival works from his family's private collection, in addition to kind of funkadelic-themed work from local DC artists. So that should be a really fun one coming up. And finally, last thing to discuss, the public art team has held three artwork dedications just this month, they were all part of the Public Art Building Communities Grant, managed all by one of our very own public art coordinators, Ms. Carrie Kennedy, she has been very busy. The first one we acknowledged was on April 6th. It was Swept Yard by artist Patrick McDonough and Curry Hackett. The grantee was the Friends of Kingman Park Civic Association, and the work is said to pay joyful homage to the neighborhood through materials, form, and community participation. It weave seating elements and celebratory structures throughout the park, so lots of fun ways to interact. The second work we dedicated was Found by artist and grantee Ira Tattlemann. That dedication was on April 20th, and it was in celebration of Earth Day 2024. Neighbors created sculptures during one of three free public workshops during the previous month, experimenting with how to turn trash into art. It was a beautiful way to just bring the community together. And the last thing worth acknowledging, our final dedication, was the Endangered Animals Art Project. The grantee organization was the Capitol Hill Artist Workshop, and that dedication was just the other day, on the 27th. And it was a community-focused public art project that promoted livability, walkability, and delight, as well as awareness of the local effects of our changing environment. We added 10 new sculptures on the Connecticut Avenue corridor between Woodley Park and Cleveland Park metro stations. So that's it, lot going on.
Thank you, Jenna.
I'm sorry, Carla.
I just said, thank you, Jenna.
Anything else on public art?
No, that's it.
Thank you. I mean, our public art program is so important because it, in my opinion, is the closest way of ensuring that the taxpayers really see their money coming back to them. The grants are fantastic, that's great work. Public art is special in a different way, and this is a very impressive roster of things we have done and things we're planning to do. So my congrats and thanks to the team. Any questions?
Hi, good evening, my name is Cecily, I am a black woman, wearing a turquoise dress. Two questions, one is the, I'm really interested in the Found exhibit, is it up anywhere, or did they just do workshops and then they put, did they put it someplace for exhibit? Or if you can explain just that. And the second thing is, for Endangered Animals Art Project, how was it decided where the new sculptures were going to be installed? I just noticed it just between, you know, upper northwest, between Connecticut and Woodley Park, but how was it decided where they would be placed?
I could provide some answers to some of that. Found, and I hope people get an opportunity to, check this out, I had an opportunity to go and do the groundbreaking the other day, and these are found objects, people have found either in their car, or maybe what one could consider waste, and they have been able to bring it all together and tell stories. And this organization has had workshops about how to, I guess, curate these found items into something that's pretty neat. I keep going back to the car because this person basically made a motor out of like McDonald cups and everything else, and how they ended up doing it, you know, he came to the event not knowing what he could do, and he went to his car and just found all the waste that he had there. But it's also meant to impress upon people the importance of how much we do waste and how it can be reused. As far as the Endangered Animals Project, it was a collaboration between the Cleveland Park, the Cleveland Park bid, or Main Street, Main Street or bid, and this is actually the second iteration. There's an earlier iteration that was done on Capitol Hill by Chaw, and so what they, if you are going down Connecticut Avenue and you see some of the lampposts, the different sculptures have been able to reimagine what some of these endangered species look like, one of which I learned from, learned is that the, is it the, oh, it's a, not a lion type of thing, it's wild, not a wildcat. It's kind of like a wildcat, I have to go ahead and look, figure it out, but I know that it was endangered to begin with. And they've offered coloring books to young people that they can also color and learn about these things. And so it was a, and the chairman of, when we were there in Cleveland Park at the bid for Art All Night last year, she had mentioned her idea of being able to do something like this, and what we provided was what they call, I guess, a matching grant to make it a reality. So the place was determined because of the placement of the bid in the Main Street.
The first question about, is Found still up? That was your first question, right?
I believe Found, and these are, it's a temporary, it's up for only a few hours, I'm not positive if it's still up, these are some fragile pieces, and I believe there were three different times it might still be available there in the park, but it's used on a Saturday for a few hours that you can go and take a look at it.
And the second question was related to the location of the Endangered Animal Art Project and how those locations were determined. So Dr. Curry is not on this call, and we want to get back to you, Cecilia, with the answer for that.
Art Education, Hector?
Latino male, white hair, blue shirt, old, anyway. The Arts Education Committee met on Tuesday, April 9th. In attendance were myself and Commission Chair Reggie Van Lee, Deputy Director Marky, and the Arts Learning Specialist Marcia Howard, Arts Learning Coordinator Andrea Brown, and the member also was Ms. Sims, Carla Sims. Words on Fire Poetry Festival is a rather important program that we do for quite a few years. The 17th Annual Poetry Out Loud Competition took place on Saturday, March 16th in a new location, the UDC Auditorium for the Arts. Sophomore Nyla Dinkins of Benjamin Banneker High School actually came in in first place and will represent Washington DC at the National Poetry Out Loud Competition, sponsored by the National Poetry Foundation and the National Endowment for the Arts, or way on May 1st at George Washington University, Lizner's Auditorium. Details covering in-person attendance and/or live streaming, the evidence can be found in our website. Celebrating the Creative Spark is a program that is being revived, actually, although it has existed in the past. This Arts Education Department is preparing to relaunch and celebrate the Creative Spark Program this summer. The program is geared towards three-session immersive arts education experience, including a range of artistic disciplines from movement to theater for seniors 50-plus, and is scheduled to run from June to August 2024. Individuals and organizations interested in applying for a Celebrate the Creative Spark residency are encouraged to visit our website, details for that deadline. This is a very important program, we've been really working very hard at an outreach towards the senior community in Washington DC. Internships are also available through our agency, and we are seeking undergraduates and graduate-level interns for summer 2024 for opportunities to work in the Grants Communications, Events, and Public Arts Department for a six-week experience from July through August. Details can be found in our website, Opportunities page. For inquiries, please email Arts Learning Coordinator Andrea Brown at andrea.brown3@dc.gov. This is a rather brief, but it doesn't encompass truly the full scope of activity that can take place within the Arts Education Department. Thank you very much.
I will add that at the budget hearing, Councilmember Zachary Parker challenged us to really focus on children, in the transformative art, you know, power of the arts to children. So we have great support for what we do in our education from him and from others as well. Questions? Cecily, IDEA?
Good evening, everybody, my name is Cecily Habimana. I am, again, a black woman, wearing a turquoise dress, short hair, and the IDEA, the IDEA Committee did not meet this past month, but I did meet with the Commission Department to share updates on recent activities. We talked about the cultural observances and to provide an update on the 44 recommendations submitted by the Racial Equity Task Force in 2021. We'll continue to work together to schedule the next IDEA Committee, which is going to be held in May. However, to date, there are 28 of the 44 recommendations that are either complete or in progress. This yields a 63% of progress to completion rate, which I'm very excited about, this progress. A couple examples include items, it includes the extension of the GOS grant to two years, as voted by the Grants Committee, and also one of the action items that were in, are in progress is considering a mechanism that will provide grant writing support for grant applicants. Right now, the Community Outreach Team has been working with the Grants Management Department on the Grant Assistance Program Initiative, which is where current grantees go out into the community and help with grant writing. So the IDEA Committee will continue to intentionally work on these items until each item is complete, ensuring that there is integration, communication, and a sustainability plan in creating a more applicable pathway for all DC-based artists to contribute, be invested in, and supported across the DC artistic landscape. I am going to allow, take a moment, is Clara on? Can she be promoted? Yeah, she's ready. Okay, so she's going to be going through the rest of the remarks in this document.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Clarissa Landry. My pronouns are she, her, hers, I identify as a black woman. I am currently wearing a tan-colored dress with buttons around the collar and decorated or with, detailed with flowers along the collar and in the front of the gown. As Commissioner Habimana shared, I'll be continuing our IDEA remarks portion, beginning with an update on recent activities that include the IDEA Office attended- That include the IDEA office attending the National Diversity and Leadership Conference. We, two members of our department, as well as two members of the Grants Management Team, attended this conference in Dallas, Texas from April 15th through the 18th for its 20th anniversary program. And this was an incredible conference that was hosted by the National Diversity Council led by its Council Chairman, Dennis Kennedy. I mean, it's a national hub for inclusion, diversity, equity, and accessibility best practices, and connections, and sharing other thought leadership with attendees. And when conference attendees include leaders and decision-makers from a variety of industries, with internationally renowned speakers who brought their unique experiences, integrating various diversity and inclusion topics that can be applied from strategy development to key takeaways that can benefit attendees in their personal and professional lives. There were a range of topics that included specific roundtables, some for particular identities, be it black women, black men, women, white men, intersection of so many others. You also had strategy development, board placement, AI integration into diversity, equity, inclusion, best practices, and a myriad of other things. We were very excited to be able to attend this particular session and conference, and greatly excited about how we can integrate some of those best practices into our everyday experiences here at the agency and better serve the artistic landscape and community that we are so appreciative of being a part of. And we will be hosting a debrief, a more formal debrief, in the coming weeks to share more key insights as we continue to develop our office and program that benefit our grantees. Moving on, in addition to being able to attend that conference, we did maximize our travel and were able to interact and engage with three members of the Dallas Office of Culture and Arts, two of their deputy executive directors, as well as their public affairs officer. It was a very brief encounter, but we were able to share just why we were in the area, share some of the lessons learned as they too are working through some of their budgetary constraints and opportunities. And in fact, we met them and interacted with them en route to their own commissioners' meeting. So we will continue that interaction and continue to build a national network across arts and culture and see how we can learn from one another and integrate best practices as well. And then lastly, what we did learn about the Dallas Office of Arts and Culture is that they have six venues across the Dallas landscape where they are personally responsible for the art that is placed there, one of which being the Bath House Culture Center. And we were able to interact and have a tour given by the director of the Bath House Culture Center located in Dallas, Texas. We were able to see where they host a myriad of events, how they actually have the art located in their facility, and as well as meet some of the artists, and where they have a very high percentage of veteran artists, military service members who have decided to direct their talents to giving back and sharing their experiences through art. So that was very exciting to be able to do so. The four days are filled with sessions, workshops, speakers, and just overall engagement that allows us to optimize what we're doing and to bring in best practices from other well-known art centers. So overall, an incredible experience. Next, we have a big initiative that's happening within the IDEA office called Key Performance Indicator Initiative, KPIs. This is an initiative to establish key performance indicators to continue to promote equity in our grant processes. We're implementing a standardized data collection methodology as an art agency. This will significantly benefit the agency and help establish KPIs for the commission with a focus on, as I said, equity and equitable practices. This will allow us to dissect how grants are awarded based on demographic considerations that include geography and provide evidence-based recommendations that'll counteract any potential patterns for an equitable allocation of resources from the agency. This department is working closely with key team members across the agency to do just that, so that we can actualize this initiative and integrate future iterations, for future iterations of grant application processes. Moving on to cultural observances, this is a very incredible season for acknowledging just the rich tapestry of diversity and acknowledging all of these different cultures and backgrounds and contributors to the art landscape, artistic landscape, and the cultural landscape across the greater DC area. This month, in fact, is actually the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Accessibility Appreciation Month. And so it's a pivotal time for the arts. As a commission, we're focusing on honoring and supporting artists from diverse backgrounds, and the commission's commitment is especially visible in our efforts to address and close the generational wealth gap amongst artists, being that this is a very lucrative industry, and we understand how challenging it can be just for basic resources to contribute to the artistic landscape that we appreciate so much. So that is our pledge and our promise to try to do that a bit more equitably. By prioritizing equitable resource distribution, the commission ensures that artists based in DC, regardless of their background, have access to the financial support and opportunities necessary to thrive. And this initiative not only acknowledges the unique challenges faced by underrepresented artists, but also actively works toward creating a more inclusive and equitable arts community through grants, exhibitions, and educational programs. Again, we're just very excited that this is a month that we openly acknowledge, that we share on multiple social media platforms. And while we cannot always promise perfection, we can always promise effort and progress. Moving into next month, we will be acknowledging as a commission Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. It's observed every May, and it holds immense importance for the Arts Commission as it celebrates and recognizes the rich cultural traditions and contributions of this diverse community. The theme for the AANH NPI Heritage Month is advancing leaders through innovation. And this emphasizes the role of leadership and creativity in driving forward with the arts and cultural sectors. There are multiple observances through this month to include Jewish Heritage Month. As you just heard, there was an emphasis on Arab-American Heritage Month, which was also amplified from the commission. While the theme has not been determined just yet, of course, as we do with all cultural observances, we want to make sure that the contributions, the stories, the narratives are as well celebrated for Jewish Heritage Month, as well as for Mental Health Awareness Month. As we know, the arts and other artistic expressions have a way of making sure that, that the therapeutic benefits of art are actually shared and encouraged through creative expression. And for this particular Mental Health Awareness Month, the theme is movement, moving more for mental health. And this resonates with the arts, performance arts, and interactive installations because it promotes expression and it involves physical movements such as dance and other emotional and mental health outlets that can really help to address other challenges that people experience every day. So we are excited to make sure that we're highlighting the symbiotic relationships between physical movement and mental wellbeing and continue to share other artists across the DC artistic landscape that are doing the same. Other observances, because we know that we can't utilize the entirety of the time going through each one, but we do want to recognize just a few. Now, realize that this list is not exhaustive, but we are trying our best to be very inclusive. April ends Jazz Music Appreciation Month, and we have a few jazz artists in our midst, including our executive director. But we also know that there are several jazz festivals happening across the nation, including the run at the Kennedy Center highlighting the intersection of hip-hop and jazz, and the artists who contribute to both genres. May also will have Heritage, excuse me, Haitian Heritage Month, Cinco de Mayo Military Appreciation Month, and Memorial Day. Thank you all. Any questions? I'll be standing by.
Just a reminder to everyone that tomorrow specifically is Jazz Appreciate, International Jazz Day, April 30th. And although it says International Jazz Day, what that day is designed to do is to appreciate those jazz artists who are based in your locale. So I just encourage all of you to find a good jazz show to go see tomorrow and support it for International Jazz Day. There we go.
Any questions? Oh, Hector.
I just simply wanted to address the issue of the Key Performance Indicator Initiative. To clearly understand that for certain organizations, this particular pursuit presents a different set of challenges for organizations that are not necessarily either funded or have the staffing appropriation for this kind of research and database mining, if you wish. Are there, how do you actually provide the kind of support to these organizations in order for there to be a, you know, compliance with this particular initiative? So that it doesn't become an added burden? Because right now, a lot of arts organizations that I know of are having major struggles. So how do we add on this particular initiative without it causing greater pain?
If I could be free to respond?
Please.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. The intent is to create a baseline of data that we currently don't have at, available to us. We have, and I think, you know, while we understand that new initiatives can create additional work, being that we are a new office, we need to create some semblance of understanding of the landscape across various demographics, across the eight wards, kind of beyond, you know, your standard Google search, so to speak. We actually have access to a lot of data through the surveys that the agencies are issuing on a continuing basis that at a minimum allows us to bifurcate the data on who's applying for grants by our discipline. And then you can further triage that by ward. Using that same information without having the redundancy of multiple surveys allows us to review that data, put it into, you know, a series of Excel spreadsheets that we have readily available. And we are actually able to do those data analytics in-house through Tableau, which is a platform of record that's acknowledged by DC government. So this is actually a skill set that we have within the agency through several of our colleagues who have offered to help not only use the data that we have in a multitude of ways so that we're not launching new initiatives every time we need it, but it also gives us the opportunity to have a more recent point of reference than what we've had in the past. So while it may be a bit of a lift at the forefront, it will have benefits and reap dividends as we move forward. And we will continue to offer any updates as needed. And if there's any challenges that you've seen other arts agencies or any other organizations, which I have in private sector, and we would like to perhaps work with you so that we can flag those in advance and see if there's any concerns as we move forward. Does that answer your question?
Also gives me the notion that this is mission underway and good work on this. And I'm just very happy to hear what you just said. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? We're reaching the home stretch. Moving on to special committee updates. Chase Majana, who chairs the Special Committee on the Foundation, we're trying to create, is not here, but told me that he didn't have a lot to report. I will report just briefly on the Art Week 2025. There's clearly growing interest in and support of what we're trying to do here, evidenced most recently at the budget hearing on Friday, when Councilmember Zach Parker was trying to help us find a way to ensure, even with our budget cuts, that we did not cut the budget for Art Week 2025. So that was encouraging. As I said before, our intention is to hire a consultant to help us actually put the plan together. That is meeting challenges with the procurement process in the city, but we're going to bear our way through it that way. The plan still is to launch it in 2025, and a real desire to do a soft launch, a bite-sized soft launch in 2024, in September of this year. So we're still on the path. We're not out of the forest yet, but we're on the right path and continue to get great support from others on it. Any questions on either the Foundation or the Art Week DC 2025? If not, I think we're done. We have no unfinished business. And there being no further business, next meeting of the commission will be held Monday, May 20th, 2024, at 5:30 PM. The time is now 6:33, and this meeting is adjourned.